And we welcome you to this edition of News You Can Use. In fact, we welcome you back. This is the first show of our new fall season here at LaSalle TV 56. And we certainly want to thank LaSalle for giving us this opportunity. I'm Thera Martin-Milling, the host of your show. And today on our program, we're going to do something that I've been itching to do since she got sworn into office. And that is to shine the spotlight on the city councilwoman from the 8th Councilmatic District, that's Cindy Bass. And we're just thrilled that she's going to be joining us in just a moment to tell us about the work she's been doing since she became an elected official, some of the hot-button issues that she'll be looking at this fall when city council goes back in session, and just all of the exciting things that are going on right now that we need to know. And then, of course, before we close out on our program, we are just delighted that Dr. Donnie Patterson is able to rejoin us for another season, offering us all kinds of health and medical tips. And so, we'll have that for you as well. And then, just a reminder, and certainly you don't know this, but the day that we are taping this show is actually the 12th anniversary of 9/11. And so, we will take a few moments to certainly remember all of those lives lost, all of the wonderful men and women from America and from other countries who were here and who lost their lives either in New York City, or at the Pentagon, in our nation's capital, or right here in Pennsylvania. So certainly, a tribute for those who lost their lives on 9/11. All of that and more when we return with this edition of News You Can Use. Stay with us. And we're back once again. And thank you for turning the television set on and staying with us at Channel 56. I'm Thera Martin-Milling, and you're watching News You Can Use. My first guest of this new season, I'm just so tickled. I've got Cindy Bass here, city councilwoman Cindy Bass. Thank you for coming.
How are you? It's very good to be here with you.
I'm fine. And I'm glad to see you. And we've been watching you, and you're doing a tremendous job.
Thank you.
I'm not just saying that. People in the street are telling me that, people in the community. Now, yes, I live in your district, so I hear a lot about it. You're doing a great job.
Well, thank you very much. We're working very, very hard. We've got a great team assembled in my office. We work very hard. We are the Office of Yes. We try to get to the answer of yes. When you call, you have a complaint, a question, an issue, we try to solve it for you and do everything that we possibly can. So, it's an honor for me to serve.
Yeah. So now, is being in city council all that you thought it would be before you won and got sworn in? Or is it more challenging, more difficult?
Well, you know what? It's a challenge, there's no doubt about that. But I love what I do. You really can, or should not do this job if you don't love it, if you don't really want to be out here serving people, fixing problems, addressing issues, you know, finding new ways to address some of the concerns that we have through public policy and through the legislative process. So it's a challenge, no doubt, but I love what I do, and I'm just honored to be able to serve.
What committees do you serve on?
Well, I serve on about 10 different committees. And so, rather than name them all, I'll tell you that I'm the Chair of Parks and Recreation and Cultural Affairs, which is fantastic. It was chaired before me by Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown. She did a great job. And so now, I'm filling in on that spot, and I love it. It's, again, full of challenges. We've had a lot of accomplishments thus far. I'm really looking forward to doing more.
That sounds good. Now, one of the things that I've had an opportunity, just in the last couple of weeks, to be a part of, sitting with representatives from Penn Praxis, and talking about ideas, or sharing ideas of East and West Fairmount Park, and what would the community around Ridge and Hunting Park and in that area want. And so, now that I know you share that committee, that's very interesting. I can maybe share some ideas with you as well.
Well, that would be fantastic. We're always looking in open to hearing what people have to say, because after all, these are, you know, these are public lands. This is your playground. Fairmount Park belongs to every citizen here in the city of Philadelphia. And so, we want them to be engaged. We want folks to feel comfortable if they have an issue, or a question, or want to be engaged in a process to change what we have, or potentially change what we have. It should be an open and inclusive process. So, we want to hear your thoughts.
Okay, okay. One or two of the other committees that you're sitting on, because I don't want you to have to name all 10 of them, but one or two of the others that are really active, or doing something that you think is significant that we should share?
Oh, absolutely. Well, I'm also Vice Chair of License and Inspections, along with Councilwoman Maria Quinones Sanchez, who is the Chair. And so, as you know, that is a very important committee. You know, there's a lot of work that's done in the city through LNI. And so, making sure that, number one, they have the tools that are necessary to be able to do the job that's before them is very, very important. And number two, that they're able to serve, you know, that they're able to have those tools, have the resources, have the personnel, the man and woman power to be out there. It's very, very important to making our city run.
One of the things that I think I've come to figure out over time is that some of us think that elected officials are supposed to be like God. You're supposed to go wave a wand and fix whatever the problem is. And sometimes, it just doesn't happen like that. Some things, it's a process, it takes time. You've got to go through all these different steps. An example would be with LNI. Let's say there's an abandoned building that looks like it could possibly fall over.
Yes.
What should a neighbor do? What should a constituent do?
Well, they should be in touch with our office immediately. So, public safety is number one. It's always going to have to be a priority, particularly with LNI, because they can have the opportunity to control so much of what happens when buildings fall down, or there are other issues. And so, if people have concerns, there are a couple of things that we recommend that they do. Number one is you can call 311, register your issue. They will give you sort of a ticket number, so that you can track what kind of progress, what's being done on that particular situation. But I always say, besides calling 311, call us. We want to know also. And wherever we can help move it further along, make sure that it doesn't get forgotten, we're going to do that.
I'm laughing because, Council Lady, I got the training to be a 311 certified liaison, right? So I took the training, and I got my little certificate. And I don't like to, I still like to call you.
Okay.
I call my councilperson, I'm like, I don't want to figure this out by myself. I want my council lady, or someone on her staff, to know about it.
Well, we're on the phone with the various city departments on the regular, all day, every day. And so, to me, it makes more sense that you call us. You don't have to figure it out on your own. Let us help you, because we're already talking to them anyway, so.
Okay. Any big public hearings coming up this fall that the public might want to come down to City Hall and listen in on, get informed?
Well, there's going to be a lot happening this fall. And hearing dates haven't necessarily been all announced yet, but there's a lot of issues that are coming up. And so, as you know, public schools and funding, that still is a major issue, that's still going to be quite a conversation about that. And I think it's something that we're really going to have to take very, very seriously. There is nothing more important than making sure that every child in Philadelphia gets a quality education. And so, where we have a responsibility, and a duty, and an obligation to make sure that it happens, I suspect that there will be various hearings, lots of conversation, you know, and just general dialogue throughout the city, whether it's city council, the mayor's office, education advocates, or, you know, what have you. People are going to be talking about public education, because we've got a long way to go.
Well, now, I'm an old grandmom now, with grandchildren and all of that, so I'm not as up-to-date with everything that's happening in the Philadelphia public schools. I let my children deal with that, because they're the parents now, right? But I am very concerned still about the Philadelphia public schools. And I read, well, from years ago, Blondell Reynolds Brown, in fact, Councilwoman Brown, got the sports teams to all agree to put money in a pot to help with the public schools, right?
That's correct.
That's not enough money?
Oh, no. It's not enough money. And if you think about it, public education in Philadelphia has been cut, 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 under the Corbett administration. We're really, you know, so far behind in terms of what we actually need. And one of the things that I personally find frustrating is that I don't think we're having even the dialogue to talk about what is it that we really need. You know, we're talking about $50 million as sort of a stop-gap measure, or the $310 million that was requested, you know, 65 million from, or 60 million from the city, and then another 120, I believe it was, from the Commonwealth, and then, you know, 130 from union concessions. But that was, again, you know, a stop-gap measure. It wasn't, you know, what does it require to provide a quality education in public schools? So we're not even having that, you know, conversation. We're talking about really just, you know, fixing a budget and covering a deficit. So it's very, very frustrating that we can't have that conversation right now, because until we get there, we're still going to be shortchanging our children. I spend every Friday in public schools in my district. I go out, I talk to the principals, I talk to the administrators, I talk to teachers, I visit classrooms. You know, I do at least two or three when school is in session. We're just gearing up and starting to do that again in the fall. And I can tell you, there are a lot of things that are happening, there are a lot of things that are missing, you know, and I personally feel very connected to what's happening, because I've had this exposure. They need help. Our schools need a lot of help. And so, we have to give it to them, we have to find the resources.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. Well, we're going to be praying on that. And I know that the mayor has a plan, Mayor Michael Nutter has a plan, and I know that City Council President Darrell Clark has a plan.
Yes.
And which plan is going to go? Do you know yet? Or is that still being discussed?
It's still being discussed. You know, I've been very supportive of Council President Clark's plan. I think it's probably the best way to go. And what we would do is, we actually are looking at buildings, school buildings, that the district just recently closed. There's about an inventory over, we estimate, worth $200 million. And so, to get that $50 million that they need immediately, rather than going into debt and to borrowing, which would cost us an additional $60 million, I think, in interest payments, what we think is the best route to go through is to actually go and get the funding from, or actually use city resources to get that funding, and provide it to an agency, a quasi-government agency, that would actually provide the funding. So like a PICA, or PAID, or PCDC, or one of those sorts of groups.
Yes.
So that they could actually provide the funding right now, and in the meantime, we can work on getting the $50 million through the sales. Some of those buildings are on very valuable pieces of real estate. So if you look at University City High School, which is in, you know, near Penn, near Drexel, it's going to be snapped up right away. There are other schools in that immediate neighborhood, there's one I saw today on Woodland Avenue. It's going to be snapped up right away. There are other schools that are in very desirable neighborhoods that are going to have no problem selling. So we don't think it's going to be an issue coming up with that $50 million.
I know as I was reading a report in Jet Magazine, in fact, they were talking about what's happening in Philadelphia with public schools is happening in other major market cities such as Chicago, and Los Angeles, and Detroit, Michigan, also. And I'm wondering, why is that? You know, it seems like in areas where there's poor communities, and the least of these are the ones that keep getting more things taken from them.
It seems to me, and I can't speak for other states, but I know in Pennsylvania, it feels as if there is a disinvestment in public education, particularly in urban areas like Philadelphia. If you look at one particular part of my district, such as Germantown.
Yes.
You have Germantown High School closed. You have Fulton Elementary School, which is right around the corner, closed. You have Imani Charter School, which is in the neighborhood, which is threatening with closure. You have Roosevelt High School, which was also on the closure list, but received, you know, a little bit of a reprieve.
Reprieve of some kind.
A little bit of a reprieve. We're still not exactly sure what's happening with that. But there are a lot of different things that are happening that sort of signal that public education in Germantown, in this one particular part of Philadelphia, is not a priority. And so, I say, what does that mean for the rest of the city? What does that mean for other neighborhoods who are experiencing the same thing? And how do we get in front of that?
More questions, more questions. And we're going to come back and continue our conversation with the honorable City Councilwoman Cindy Bass. She is my friend, and I'm so glad that she's joining us right here at TV 56. We'll return in a moment.
Hey, hey. Ich bin ein Zahnich Täter. Ich sehe wo wir sind. Hey. Ich bin ein Zahnich Täter. Ich heiße. Ich bin kein Deutscher. Wie viel Minuten? Bitte mit deinem Mann, okay?
Where are you going?
Wie heißen Sie?
Hi. Just fine. Just got here. They seem nice. It's pretty good. Yeah. I'm excited. Wish you luck.
She passed away about six months ago. It was really hard to learn that there was no cure. So, we sought hospice care. The hospice people, they really helped. They made her feel comfortable. And they helped me and the girls, especially the girls. They're helping us get through this loss. Now, hospice people, they're just, they're good people. They're really good people.
He passed away last year. It was hard at first when I found out how sick he was. The doctor suggested hospice care at home. Hospice helps so much. He came home, and that was wonderful. They helped me take care of him. They made his last months comfortable, pain-free. We were able to find some joy till the very end.
And we continue with our program now. If you just turned your television on, let me tell you, you are watching News You Can Use right here at TV 56. I'm your host, Thera Martin-Milling, glad to be back. And this is the first show of our new season. Thank you, LaSalle, for having us back again. And I am honored to have, sitting by my side, someone who I call a friend. Her name is Cindy Bass, the honorable Cindy Bass, as in city councilwoman, 8th Council District. We are glad for you, and glad for the district, that we've got a strong, energetic, intelligent, bright, enthusiastic elected official to carry things forward from the days of Donna Reed Miller. So now, you've been in for a little while. It's almost time for reelection.
Almost, almost. So we run again in 2015, and right now, we're just, you know, working hard, working hard. We want our work to speak for ourselves.
Yeah. Do you think that constituents get it, like, understand what a councilperson can do for them, as opposed to what a congressman, or a state rep, or a state senator can do? Because it seems like there's a lot of confusion in that area.
Well, you know what? Sometimes they do. Sometimes they have that knowledge, and sometimes they don't, and that's okay. We work with everyone who calls us. And so, if you call with a state issue, we'll still try to help you. Some things are out of our control, so we may refer you to your appropriate state representative or state senator, or on the federal level as well. But for the most part, if you call our office, we try to help you. And let you know for the future use that, you know, this is handled by this particular department. You know, if you're calling about a driver's license issue, it's through the state, it's Penn Dot, you want to talk to your state representative.
Okay, okay. All right. Now, I want to back up a little bit and share with our viewing audience a little bit about the Cindy Bass before she became an elected official, because I feel like I know you.
Yes.
I know who you are. We don't hang out, we're not in the same circles all the time, and stuff like that, but I feel like we're friends.
Yes, we are.
And we're from the same political family, even more importantly, right? Still proud of that. But there's a lot more to Cindy Bass than just the elected official. Your mother.
Yes.
Your wife.
Yes.
But before all of that even, you were just like one of us from the neighborhood, right?
That's correct, that's correct.
What part of the city did you grow up in?
I grew up in North Philadelphia. I was born at around 17th and Lehigh, across from where State Senator Shirley Kitchen's office is.
Yeah.
And then, when I was about five or six, we moved over to 20th and Allegheny, which is where I spent, you know, most of my years.
Wow.
And so, you know, it was a great time. I love.
Now, there was a connection with you, with Allegheny West Foundation as a youth?
That is correct. So, I know you do a lot of work with Allegheny West Foundation now. They hired me. It was my very first job when I was 15 years old. They gave me my first job at Taylor Lock Company at 21st and Lippincott. And so, I learned so much there. It was such a great experience. And it was a summer job, and they gave me, you know, a little stipend, and I was so excited, and I got really valuable experience. And Allegheny West is still at it, and now I'm honored.
Still at it.
Because I have some of those same young people from the program I was in, who come into my office now, and who work with me during the summer months. So it's really a wonderful thing.
I wanted you to share that, because I don't know how many young people may look at a TV 56, but to me, that is so inspirational, to know that, you know, you can be born in West Philly, maybe the parents who aren't filthy rich, or you can be born in North Philly, maybe the parents who aren't filthy rich, or South Philly, wherever, and still you can rise up and do great things in your life.
Yes, yes, absolutely. You know, I just think about, you know, how blessed I am, what a wonderful experience all of this has been for me. I thank people that they give me the opportunity to do this. They didn't have to give me the opportunity. And so, I feel that it's incumbent upon me to really show them that I'm appreciative by helping fix some of the issues that we have in our community. And also to, you know, create public policy that's going to make lives easier, and happier, and healthier.
Yes.
It's just such a blessing.
But there's something for education, too. If you would speak on that for a second. You obviously were not one of the girls who was just trying to be cute and flipping their hair all the time, and I want to be sexy. You were doing something positive to make sure that you had it up here, so that you could rise.
Well, you know, I'm a public school grad, so, from K to 12, so, again.
From high school?
I went to Parkway High School. Back then, it was Alpha Beta. And so, I went to Parkway Beta, which was in Center City. Wonderful experience. I went to E. Washington Rhodes Middle School. Now, it's a high school, I believe. I went to John Greenleaf Woodier, which was unfortunately one of the schools that was closed, elementary. And I also started my early years at M. Hall Stanton, which I believe was just recently closed. So, you know, I had great experiences. I had great teachers. I still remember some of them.
Yeah.
And, you know, they really left a mark. So, public education was, you know, it was fantastic. It works. It worked for me, it worked for a lot of people, and so, we have to get back to it.
And then, you got the big T on your chest.
Yes, I do. Temple University, all the way.
Okay.
Sorry, LaSalle.
And what was your major?
I was a business major.
Business major.
Yes, yes.
So wasn't poli sci?
No, no.
Did you know you wanted to be a politician? And when did that whole idea get born in you?
Well, you know, it was always in me, even though, you know, I was in the business school, and, you know, I had a love of real estate, and all of those sorts of things, and development, and that's really what I was interested in most. But, you know, on the side, whenever I could, I would volunteer for campaigns, you know. Ever since I was, you know, very little, I was interested in campaigns, voting. As soon as I turned 18, you know, I ran.
Yes, yes, yes.
I had an opportunity to go and vote and registered.
Yep.
So for me, it was something that we talked about in our family all the time. My mother instilled how important it was to vote, that you have to be a part of the process. If you don't vote, somebody else is voting their issue, you know, you're losing out.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, well, so you shared that, and it all paid off.
Yes.
And when you first ran, talk about sticktuitiveness.
Oh, yeah.
You didn't win that first time.
I didn't win.
You didn't get bitter.
No, no, no.
You didn't get angry, and you didn't give up.
Right. Well, it was tough. You know, when you run for office, you have to be prepared to lose. And so, you know, I ran, I gave it my best. At the end of the day, we came up just a little bit short, but it was okay. I mean, I, you know, I felt some kind of way. I went home, I licked my wounds, and I got back out there. Because at the end of the day, it's bigger than any one individual. This is about helping people.
Absolutely. And you're doing it, you're doing it well. Your staff is doing it.
Thank you.
When I call the office, they're responsive, and not even saying a name. Oh, I'm Thera, or I'm this. Before you even say that, they're on point. So you've done well in selecting an excellent staff. Teresa Brunson?
She's fantastic.
That's my girl.
Yes, she is, she is.
All right. So Council Lady, thank you for coming. We appreciate you again.
Thank you for having me.
Love you. We're praying for you and your family.
Thank you.
And just wish you Godspeed with all that you do.
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll stay in touch. And now, it's time for us to get that health tip of the day. I'm so glad to say that Dr. Donnie Patterson from Einstein Medical Center, she rejoins us for another season. I count that a blessing. Dr. Donnie?
I'd like to talk to you about chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, also known as COPD. 24 million people in our country have COPD. It's the fourth-leading cause of preventable death in our country. It's very serious, because it damages the inside of our lungs, most often caused by smoking, and it causes a person to have difficulty breathing. Some of the common symptoms are coughing, shortness of breath, wheezing, and production of a lot of mucus. In the early stages, a person may not have symptoms at all. So if you, or someone you know, has ever smoked, you should ask your doctor to get a very simple breathing test called spirometry. Prevention is key. Some of the preventative strategies are avoid smoking, avoid secondhand smoke, make sure that you avoid breathing in dangerous chemicals, and definitely talk to your doctor about getting the flu or pneumonia vaccine. No matter how old you are, if you stop smoking, there are definite benefits. So set a quit date. How about October 1st? You can do it. I'm Dr. Donnie, and I wish you the best of health. But if you can't be the best, you definitely can be better. Thank you.
We do thank you very much, Dr. Donnie, for sharing that health note for us today, and we'll look forward to her joining us again on our next program. And to our Council Lady, any final word that you want to give to our viewing audience?
Well, I just want to really thank you for having me. I want to thank LaSalle University for being so gracious. This is wonderful. I really, you know, am excited to be here, but I'm even more excited for this program, because it's such great information. I learned something new today about COPD, and I just really want people to take advantage of this information. So, thank you so much for having me.
All right, Council Lady, and the phone number for Cindy Bass, for city councilwoman Cindy Bass, her city council office phone number, 215-686-3424.
Yes.
All right, I got that number, right?
Yes, yes.
It's in my brain. Okay. And to our viewing audience now, we certainly want to, I want to first commend the students of LaSalle University. As I was watching the television news last night, one day before the 12th anniversary of 9/11, I saw that students from LaSalle, in fact, it was the student government body that gathered themselves together, and they put out flags for all of the people who lost their lives in 9/11 12 years ago. So let's start by commending LaSalle students for what they did. But then, for all of the commemorative celebrations that happened around the nation and around the world for the lives lost, we want to, with those people who were commemorating their loved ones, stand with them in solidarity and say how much that day 12 years ago hurt us and the kind of history that you never want to have in a nation. Certainly, there were people from Philadelphia who lost their lives in New York City on that day, and people just around the world who were in New York, or in the Pentagon, or somewhere in Pennsylvania when it went down there, that lost their lives. So it wasn't just Americans, or it wasn't just New Yorkers, or it wasn't just Philadelphians. And so our prayers and our thoughts continue to go out to all of their families, and we certainly hope that their memories will never, ever be forgotten. And certainly, we know that America will never forget 9/11. We thank you again so much for joining us on this first edition of our show as we come back for a new season. Thank you, Tanya Ellis, and everyone for helping us to be here, and everybody out there listening and watching in our viewing audience, be safe, be very, very safe, and take care. Hello, everyone. We welcome you to this edition of News You Can Use. I'm your host, Thera Martin-Milling, and so delighted to be back with you once again. Thank you for welcoming me into your home, or your bedroom, or the gymnasium, wherever it is that you happen to be watching this program, News You Can Use on TV 56. Now, today on our program, we're going to have some fun. I tell you, in the first segment, we're going to be talking about boxing. We're also going to be talking about stopping the violence and giving young people maybe some training to show them how they can use physical energy in another way, something positive, like a well-put-together sport, boxing. You've got to check it out. Stay around for that. And when we turn the page a little later on in the show, we're going to talk with a young lady by the name of Doris Martinez. She is one of the staff of LaSalle University, and they're going to be hosting a community health fair on October 5th. So you want to get that information. And then, of course, before we say goodbye on our program, News You Can Use, we've got Dr. Donnie Patterson rejoining us again from Einstein Medical Center. She's got some health tips that we absolutely need. Don't you go anywhere, and don't change that dial. We'll be back in a moment. Welcome once again. If you just turned your television set on, if you just walked into the room and this TV station was already on, Channel 56, we want to thank you for checking us out on this edition of News You Can Use. Today, I want to take this program and dedicate it to the memory of a gentleman I never met. In fact, I just learned about him today. He was 103 years old when he passed away about a week ago. His name was Joseph Tretter. And guess what? In the 1930s, he was a boxer. Quite a gentleman, from what I've heard about, and we're going to hear more about him in a few moments, and we'll do that right now. I've got two wonderful guests sitting by my side. First of all, we have the grandson, the grandson of Joseph Tretter, this 103-year-old gentleman who was a boxer back in the day. This is his grandson. And thank you for sharing me that story about your grandfather.
Thank you for asking.
And you're Michael Davis.
Yes.
Michael G. Davis.
Michael G. Davis, yes.
And I also have with me Billy Craig, my new longtime friend.
Absolutely.
And Billy Craig is a promoter, as are you, and businessman, both businessmen.
Yes.
And I got to say, Sumo Stakes, because Billy Craig owns Sumo Stakes, which just opened recently here in North Philadelphia, and you have different business activities that you're doing, and one of them has to do with the boxing world.
Right. Champions of Tomorrow, which is a, it's a partnership with Damon Feldman and Meldrick Taylor. Damon Feldman, as we all know, has been a boxer. He has done over 100 fights as far as promoting. Meldrick Taylor was a two-time world champion, Olympic gold medalist. He has a book out right now, Two Seconds From Glory, which is going to be made into a movie. They wanted to be here tonight, obviously, but as you know, they had to go to other meetings in Delaware.
But Meldrick is from Philly.
He is from Philly, yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. Okay, okay, good.
And so I advise him, I'm their business advisor, and I also take care of all the marketing and the business of Champions of Tomorrow.
Yeah.
So any questions you may have, please answer.
Well, I want to talk about this beautiful sign you're holding, which is promoting an upcoming boxing match. But before we even go there.
Sure.
What I, what really made me click with you, Billy Craig, and with you, Michael, and with Mr. Feldman was when you started talking about, hey, look, the other thing that we're really into and that we do is this whole message around stopping the violence.
Yes.
And Lord knows, we've got too much violence going on, not just in Philly. I'm not trying to pick on Philly because I'm a Philly girl, and I love Philly. New Jersey and Delaware and across the country, there's just too much violence that we're hearing about. And it's different kinds of violence. Sometimes it is young people fighting with each other. Sometimes it's older people. Sometimes it's folks who want to go into schools and buildings and post offices with loaded guns because they're mad at one person and, you know, start just shooting at random. So there's a lot of different kinds of violence that we have in our nation, unfortunately. But anyone, anyone who's talking about stop the violence, I want you to come and be with me and be on my cable TV show that I've been blessed to have this opportunity to bring people on here. So the passion around stopping the violence, and what you all are saying to young people in particular, what's the message?
Well, stop the violence, basically step into the ring. Stop taking it to the streets. Stop going that extra step and just ruining not only your life, but obviously somebody else's life. And if we can give the youth of today an outlet, whether it be boxing or in a gym somewhere, we're all for that. And that's what we're trying to do. That's what we're doing at these venues that we have had. The last one we had was in Chester, Pennsylvania, and it was to stop the violence. And it was a great turnout, great fanfare, and we've had a great response from the public. And we've had a lot of young people get in touch with us and, hey, how can I join the gym? Basically, get them off the streets at 7, 8 o'clock at night.
Yes, yes.
Get them in the gym, get some training, get some discipline. We're not saying get in the ring and be there. It has nothing to do with, people think, oh, boxing, it's fighting. Yes, it is, but it's also discipline.
Discipline.
And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to show how you can discipline yourself. You could say the same thing about karate. There are people that take karate, not to, it's discipline, it's training, it's mental, you know, therapy, as we say.
What is the earliest age a parent or parents can think about signing their little boys or baby girls up for boxing?
Well, you know, I know with, I can start with karate, it's five, four, okay? A lot of students, a lot of teachers want to take students four or five.